I would like to call Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting. Order in the unlikely event of emergency if we have to evacuate the room, please note the location of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cell phones and rise with what allegiance. Please remain standing for movement sound of motion. We'll start tonight with 4.0 presentations. 4.1, we have our mentor program at William Street School. That's Stacy Conti.
First of all, I want to start by saying thank you for affording us this opportunity to share with you some of the great things that are happening here at William Street. For those who don't know me, I am Stacy Conti, one of our assistant principals here. Alright, so we started this mentor program in this school year, the 2018-19 school year. It came out of the RTI system that we put in place. We noticed that there was a need to really build some relationships with our students outside of the academic core. So we took some time to look at where students were, where they were coming from, and what we could do to foster their relationships further than we currently were. So the ultimate goal of this is to increase student achievement, correct? Excuse me. I'm just going to use the project file instead of the clicker. So we wanted to increase student achievement, that's our ultimate goal, but we wanted to do so by building the resilience and the perseverance of our students. Therefore, the mentor program was established with the support of our teachers and as well as our students having some reflective process as we continue to move through the mentor program. So again, the purpose of this is to build skills such as resilience, perseverance, determination, to ensure students can problem solve and work through challenges as well as take ownership for their learning and their decisions. In front of you, our board members received a mentor program sheet of paper, and it just goes through the purpose: Who is mentor? How does it work? Examples of students who may benefit from a mentor? And how to refer your students in need? This is the, if you will, the advertisement piece that was received from each of the teachers, and it was built in collaboration with every one of our teachers that is part of the committee. And we'll talk a little bit about how that was formed later on in the presentation. So why are we mentoring? It's truly built to enhance student accountability. Students can monitor themselves and auto-correct. So we're building that communication, and we are ensuring that students can self-reflect and monitor their own behaviors as they become 21st century learners and they're becoming parts of the fluid relationships in our ever-changing world. We also know that student growth comes from those nurturing relationships. So when students have somebody outside of just their parents, aunts, uncles, core teachers, they can connect with another adult in a way that they would not typically connect with them on a daily basis. So to put this under perspective, we have a student as the mentee. We have a teacher outside of the core as the mentor, and they're working together simultaneously for the well-being of that child to help them blossom and flourish because there was a need. Something there was telling us that that child in fact needed more. So some of the features of this program are that the students and the adults are in constant contact with each other. And again, it's focused on that positive interaction. The mentor program is born, if you will, out of the Positive Behavior Intervention System, very similar to a check-in, check-out, but it's not with the stamped name of PBIS. It in fact is created based on William Street's vision of what is best for our students. The mentors will provide consistent and constant feedback to the student, whether that be on a weekly to three to five times a week basis. We're building our social skills, again, outside of the classroom, inside of the classroom. We're communicating with parents. In order to be part of our mentor program, your parents need to be aware of it, and we'll show you that. And again, that positive reinforcement. Something comes to light when I'm telling you about our mentor program, and that is a mentor and a mentee relationship that is truly working towards the positive reinforcement. Just to highlight one particular child, our LMC worker has a dash and a dot. They're robotics. And this one particular child that I'm speeding up really benefits from using the robotics for coding. And as this child is going through this, they're able to speak and discuss and share different challenges that they're having in the classroom all while building and growing with their coding skills and their communication with this robot. It's fascinating to watch them in the hallway outside of the LMC and see the smile on this child's face as they're building that relationship and connecting. It has since helped the child integrate in further settings and just become more confident in the skills as he's continuing to grow. So how do we start? When I first began talking, I said that it came out of the RTI framework. As we were meeting last year through RTI, the students were coming up typically for academic concerns, but as we were sitting there discussing their academic concerns, we said, wait a second, it's not always the academics. Yes, they're struggling, but what truly is the core to why we're struggling? And that was because they needed, again, that relationship. They needed to be able to connect with somebody outside of the people that they were with on a daily basis. So last year was kind of a trial, if you will. We met with a couple of teachers, and they did meet with the students. It was very informal. They made some, they formed some relationships. They connected in a very informal manner, and we saw some growth. And it was, it was a spark, and I said, we need to do more, we need to grow. So for the summer, some brainstorming went into place, and then we came together as a committee, teachers signed up, and on October 2nd was the first day that we met together. And we collaborated on what was best for this type of program at William Street to meet our students' current needs. Professional learning went into play immediately. We read some literature, again, on the Positive Behavior Intervention Systems and how we could take that and mold it for William Street. And then we created all of the documents that we're using, pretty much from scratch. What does it look like and how are we using it? And then these are fluid documents that we can change as we continue to work with our students. At the end of this week, we're actually having our next recap. So our teachers have had this system in place since October 2nd, and it's time to come together. It's time to evaluate the draft and determine if our process is working, what needs to be changed. And ultimately, our teachers need to have other folks to connect with and talk about, you know, what they're seeing and the struggles that they're having trying to reach the students and come up with additional methods to help support our students in additional interventions. So that'll be happening on January 11th this week. June 7th, we will reflect on our process again with the ultimate goal of improving our process. What can we do to make what we're doing even better? Or what can stay the same, what's truly working very, very well? So this is, this is where we are. This is what we're going to continue to do, and it's going to take the teamwork of our staff and the students to make this happen. The structure of our mentor program occurs with a one-on-one design. They're meeting one to three times per week at predictable times. Students that have some unique needs really benefit typically from meeting at a consistent time. So those students, you know, it's arranged in collaboration with the classroom teacher to say which particular days they're going to be meeting on and what times they're going to be meeting. We did game rentals of work again, and we're monitoring the process because we need to then say, do we need to continue this process? Is it time to pull back? Have we shown the growth that we're looking for? So we are monitoring the process on a tracking form, which I will share in a moment. And then we'll revisit with these students six to eight weeks later and have conversations through our RTI system to evaluate the interventions. Are they successful, are they not? Do we need to change? Or are we making the growth that we're looking for, both academically and fostering that social-emotional relationship? So just to show you a little bit of what this looks like, if you're in the audience and you didn't have an opportunity to see the mentor program overview, this is just a quick snapshot of what it looks like. The, if you will, the advertisement document that the teachers are receiving to help them build some awareness of what this program is. In order to make this work, we needed it to be systematic for the teachers. So they fill out a referral form. That referral form is automatically generated to my email, sending me a contact piece of information saying, you have new students signed up. You need to plug them into the system and essentially tie them with a mentor. So this is filled out by the teachers. It takes them just a couple of minutes when they know that their child is in fact in need of a mentor. We have a parental consent documentation at that point. That email signals me, send home the parental consent documentation. At this point, you can see at the bottom, the parents must sign off to give permission for mentoring or to not give permission for mentoring. They immediately provide their contact information, so the mentor is aware of who they should contact to provide information on the process and where their child is. We have a tracking document. I'm not going to open this up for security reasons as it has all the students' names in it. But then we have the individual tracking document that every teacher, every student that's part of this has one of these documents attached to them. Every time that the mentor meets with the mentee, they document the date of time. They're able to provide a narrative, an assessment, and then the student even has an opportunity to respond and has some reflective feedback through there. So ultimately, I could talk forever about our mentor program and what this looks like and what it means. As you, I'm sure you can feel the pride that, you know, is taking place with mentor program and the growth that these students are making, but the true value is in hearing what the students have to say about it. We selected two students in this video as well as two teachers to just share with you the impact that this program is having on them. So please be mindful that these are fully candid responses from the students, and they are two students that are actively involved in the mentor program. They were very excited to share with you how this is working for them. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and play the video.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Payne. I'm a boarding teacher, and I run the mentor program at William Street. I absolutely love this program. I've seen a huge impact on this student. It gives us a chance to really talk and start his day off in a good direction. Sometimes we just organize his papers for the day, or we might just have a nice conversation about what happened the night before. Also, I've been able to communicate with his family through this, and then we've really gotten the whole team on the same page to make sure that this student is successful in school and at high school.
Hi, my name is Carlos, and today I'm going to be talking about how Mrs. Payne has helped me with schoolwork and anything else that I struggle with at home. She has helped me with schoolwork by, when I'm not quite understanding things, she has stayed in a different way that I do understand.
This program has greatly impacted me. When I see over 200 students a week, I have connections with them, but not as deep as I'd like to. So being able to really get to know one student in his classroom, in my classroom, and throughout the school day has been wonderful for me. I get to feel as if I'm making a difference in a student's life. I need to just listen all day.
The mentor program has helped me by understanding schoolwork and getting it done.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ally McCaff, and I am the board director at William Street School. I've been working with two students during this mentor program, and I have seen such a positive impact on these students. Just the fact that these two students in particular, at the beginning of the year, were kind of, you know, not coming off their shell. They weren't really talking a lot in class. They weren't participating so much. But as I've worked with them, I've sort of been able to break them off their shell and encourage them, get to know them on an individual basis, which has really helped their interpersonal skills and their participation in the classroom.
My name is Kayla. How I feel about the mentor program is that it helps me a lot. And speaking with Ms. McCaff, I can tell her if there's like a problem that I need help with, and she will give me advice on like what to do. So mentor program helped me by, say, I was upset about, like, say, my friend got mad at me, and I didn't know why. I go in with Ms. McCaff on Wednesday and say, oh, my friend is mad at me, and I don't know why. And then she gave me advice like, well, say, did you do something? Like, did you, like, did something that might have upset her? Or did you, like, or did she just take something the wrong way?
So not only has it helped the students, but I found that it's really helped me get to know what particular unique needs each student needs.
This program has helped me more because sometimes when I have problems and like I really want to tell someone, then sometimes, like, you can't always tell your parents because they can't really do everything for you. So you kind of have to like talk to someone in school, and then they can help you better. Ms. McCaff, when I am upset, she'd help me with it. So I just, I think this is really helping me a lot.
So William Street can be a really large place. It's my second year here as a teacher, and sometimes I don't know who people are. And sometimes it can feel a little, I don't know, like you're in your own world. This mentor program has really helped the spirit of this school, and it's helped us feel more cohesive. So we're all working together for a common goal. We're helping the students. They're getting to know us. We're getting to know them, and it's sort of made this school feel more like a team.
We currently have 15 students that have been put forth with a mentoring request. That was two. We also have this many teachers that have volunteered their time to be mentors to any student that has requests. If you saw within the request form, the teachers do write down which particular needs that child has and any connections that they may have outside already formed that may be of interest to that child. So these teachers have volunteered their time to just help nurture our students, connect with our students, and make our William Street students the best that they possibly can be by just giving a little bit more. We're focusing on collective advocacy. This is collective advocacy. We're coming together, we're working together for the common good of our students and doing what's right for them. So if we just take a minute and recognize these teachers, 15 students that are currently over requests, 13 that are current, or 12 that are currently active. We hope to grow, and I see that, you know, in the coming months and years, we will continue to grow. So I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to share with you about our mentor program. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask them. Yes? The interaction, it, right now, it's pretty unknown. We look at them on a six to eight week basis. So after a six to eight week timeframe, we sit down and we reevaluate the work that's been done and we take a look at that document that's been provided by their mentor through the RTI framework and have discussions within a team setting about the progress that that child's made based on the individual goal that was established through the RTI framework as well as individually with the mentor and the mentee. Oh, excellent. You know, that can, that, that's okay. It can range anywhere from a five-minute check-in to a 30-minute session. It's truly as an unneeded basis for what the child needs. The student that I talked about with the coding, that child will often be for about a half hour at a time because of what they're doing. I was just talking with a teacher earlier today, believe it or not, and they were talking about just having five-minute check-ins because the schedule afforded that, and that was all that child truly needed. So it's on an as-needed basis based on unique needs of that particular child. Any other questions? Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you again, Mrs. Conti. I think that's, the mentor program at William Street School is just yet another example of ways that adults are reaching out to students and vice versa. You know, I think it's beneficial for adults to take a child under their wing, and as Mrs. McCaff had said, she learns quite a few things about the school as well. So that's, I would say, could work. 5.0 correspondence. Does anyone on the board have any correspondence they'd like to share? 6.0 approval of minutes. 6.1, could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from December 30, 2018 meeting? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. 6.2, the Capital Project vote from the Central Eleven. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes? Any questions or comments? Before we vote, I would like to just, again, thank our community for the overwhelming support of the Capital Project, and I think the results of the vote. It goes without saying that we, that being the school board, Dr. Valli, his administrative team, and all the teachers and students have the support of this community. And I think the community believes in the vision, not only of Dr. Valli, but his administrative team again, and this school board. And once again, I'll say how proud I am to be part of this school district. With that said, all those in favor? Those opposed? 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anything from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Pretty neat. We'd just like to know if we have a less, wish everyone a happy new year. But also, just to be kind, just to say, we have a less. We are very excited as always to work with, not only the board and the teachers, but such a great community, and we are very excited to recall the capital project.
Lancaster Central Teachers Association.
I think we'd like that to have a comment, so, whatever. Do you wish everyone a happy new year and great community for the support, which I would like to have. And we'd like to recognize the number of 15 teachers that are mentors here at William Street, but tremendous work that teaches cross the country, through schools, and some of the charitable work that's been done. Teachers go with the St. Luke's tradition and the reading buddies raising money for the classes.
Thank you, Mr. Prusher. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? 8.0, board reports. Does anyone from the board have anything they'd like to report? Thank you. 9.0, superintendent's administrative report.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone again for the tremendous support of that Capital Project. It was a long time coming, and on the foot of $57.3 million, I can't thank this community, the Board of Education, for their support, administrators, teachers, faculty, staff, support staff, et cetera, but then everyone that came out to vote and everyone that lives here in Lancaster. We have great things in the horizon and look forward to being a part of it. And as always, as Mr. R. T. said, always proud to be a part of it. And thank you so much. 7.1, it really truly is a testament to the good things that so many people in the school district are doing, and we're going to take it round with it and do good things for our children. Thank you.
10.0, whole business. 10.1, site work acceptance for the Johnny Choye PTO playground. Could I have a motion to accept that work? Any questions or comments there? Just, I'd like to reiterate my thanks, our thanks to the Johnny Choye PTO and all of those who work in PTO groups on behalf of the students and the school district. So thank you once again for that donation. All those in favor? Those opposed? 11.0, new business. 11.1, personnel items. 11.1.1, could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, could I have a motion to accept the committee on special education's report? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? 11.2.2, could I have a motion to accept the committee on preschool special education's report? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? 12.0, business and financial items. 12.1, could I have a motion to accept the financial items? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? 12.2, policy adoptions, 7512 for student physicals. Could I have a motion to accept that policy? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? 12.3, again, is a policy adoption, 7522 for concussion management. Could I have a motion to accept that policy adoption? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? 12.4, policy adoption, 7260, designation of person in parental relation. Could I have a motion to accept that policy? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? 12.6, policy adoption, 5140, administration of our budget. Could I have a motion to accept that policy? What grade we skip? 12.5. Policy adoption, 7222, diploma or credential options for students with disability. I apologize. Could I have a motion to accept that policy? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? 12.6, policy adoption, 5140, administration of our budget. Could I have a motion to accept that policy? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point seventy, uh, twelve point seven, policy adoption, sixty-two thirteen, registration and professional development. Could I have a motion to accept that policy? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point eight is the second reading for fifty-four thirteen, procurement, uniform, grant, guidance for special awards. That's for information only, brought up at a future meeting, promote. Uh, twelve point nine is the second policy reading, seventy-one thirty-three, education of students in foster care. That's for information only, brought up in the future. Twelve point ten are the food service operating reports from November two thousand eighteen. Could I have a motion to accept that report? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point eleven, a contract with Enchorus Group. Could I have a motion to accept that contract? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. All right. Twelve point twelve is a contract with Carolyn Loken, who's an accompanist. Could I have a motion to accept that contract? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Uh, twelve point thirteen and twelve point fourteen are both contracts with Clarence Central School District and Cleveland, Cleveland Hill Unified, uh, School District. Those are both for health and welfare, um, arrangements that we have. Could I have a motion to accept those contracts? Any questions or comments on all of the either of those? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point fifteen is a contract with ITC Engineering. Could I have a motion to accept that contract? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point sixteen is a bid adjustment, uh, adjustment, uh, for the contract with Comon Construction Company. Uh, I'm sure the board members had a chance to look over that. Uh, could I have, uh, a motion to accept that bid adjustment? Any questions or comments there? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point seventeen is the surplus equipment report. Could I have a motion to accept that con, that report? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Uh, I'd like to group together twelve point eighteen through twelve point twenty-five. Those each have to do with construction on our Black Box Theater, which is underway. Twelve point eighteen is an AIA contract with Eric Corporation. Uh, twelve nineteen is, uh, with Comon Construction Company. Twelve twenty is FSR contracting. Uh, twelve point twenty-one is an action, with Action Roofing. Twelve point twenty-two is with Rochester Davis Fetch Corporation. Twelve point twenty-three is with MKS Plumbing Corporation. Uh, twelve point two-four is JW Danforth Company. And twelve twenty-five is with Goodman Electric Company. Could I have a motion to accept those as a group? Any questions or comments on any of those? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-six is a change order adjustment. Could I have a motion to accept that? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-seven is a bond resolution. Uh, this has to do with the rates, uh, for borrowing that the district undertakes. Could I have a motion to accept that resolution? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-eight is a contract amendment with Omni Corporation, with, which handles our four oh three B. Uh, that's a contractual item. Could I have a motion to accept that amendment? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-nine is a tax tertiary with four five seven Niagara. Uh, could I have a motion to accept that adjustment? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? Twelve point thirty is a donation acceptance from Eden Office Supply. Uh, and that was the amount of money that, uh, Mrs. Marchiole was awarded, um, for attending a conference. And she put our name in the hat, didn't she? Would you like to elaborate on that? Tremendous, uh, sure. Is she here?
Hey, uh, shout out the story there, Karen, if you don't mind, because it's a good one.
We were asked to go to Eden Office Supply to make our conference while, um, upcoming try for furniture purchase. And while we were there, they asked us if we would like to basically turn it in half with our friends, uh, to win ten thousand dollars for, um, what we've done with the base, they saw a lot of furniture. Uh, and so I provided and I wanted to donate a dollar. Um, so tomorrow our party, I will be sort of between ten thousand. Really a thousand. Um, the tour party will be meeting with some thousands of people in town. And so we just want to, uh, we're trying to solve a lot of problems to figure out a way that we can get to that. I'm sure, uh, the customers will be able to.
Wonderful. Yeah, good luck. Thank you. Uh, could I have a motion to accept that donation? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Uh, thirteen point O, we move to our public hearing. Let's see. Welcome to all those who have come to observe this meeting this evening. This is a time set aside for public hearing, a time when we have the opportunity to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this type of opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to five minutes to address the board. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not engage in dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. I would like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for, uh, for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas and sharing your opinions, but not engaging, engaging in any personal attack. Uh, this policy will be strictly enforced and anyone violating the policy will be barred from addressing the board in the future. Thank you for your cooperation. Uh, we have one speaker sign for this evening, Ms. Kate Tommaso here. Please. Hi. Would you like to come to the podium?
Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, on the school board, I first want to thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. When I first, when I first began my research into the healthcare curriculum of the Lancaster School District, I was encouraged to hear that the subject of mental health had been incorporated into the curriculum and was being taught to students beginning at the sixth grade level. I was also encouraged to hear that teachers and counselors had adopted the practice of actively encouraging students to express their feelings in a positive way. It is, however, in my personal experience that the measures the school district has enacted so far do not go far enough. This brings me to the issue that I have chosen to discuss with you, which has a vast and very heartbreaking effect on hundreds of our students before they ever reach the sixth grade. And the best way to illustrate this issue is with an exercise that I would invite all of you in your, in attendance tonight to participate in. Now, before we begin, I have to disclose that this exercise contains an account of suicidal thoughts and may be triggering to some here in the audience or even on the school board. I want you all to close your eyes. I want you to imagine that you are standing in your childhood home in front of a mirror, that you look up and see a reflection of your eleven-year-old self as a child. I want you to imagine all the hopes and dreams you had at this age for the future and the joy you felt each time you thought of them. And now I want you to imagine that those hopes and dreams are slowly disappearing, that they are being taken away and stolen and being replaced by something much worse. One day, you notice that a movie starts playing in your head, like a nightmare you can't wake up from because you're already awake. You look down and you see a pill bottle in your hand. You, even though you know it's not really there, you make a fist. You feel it's empty. You know it's not real, but that movie still continues to play regardless of whether you believe it's real or not. You open the bottle. You let the cat fall to the floor and you swallow as many of those pills in that bottle as possible can. The bottle goes into the garbage and you climb into your bed and you know that when the sun rises the next day, that you won't. The nightmare you could not wake up from ends and you are left with nothing but the tears pouring out of your eyes and a debilitating pain that keeps you from moving at all. This account is the end result of months or years of suffering by someone who is enduring severe anxiety and depression and can begin as early as the age of seven years old. You can open your eyes now. The truth, ladies and gentlemen, is that we have kids in our district who need and deserve to practice those life skills of mindfulness and positive coping skills beginning as early as the preschool level. It's something they should practice every single day, both in and outside of the classroom, just like tying their shoelaces, washing their hands after they use the bathroom, taking turns and playing with their favorite toys in a cooperative arrangement with the rest of their peers the same age as them. Now, the good, now, what you just heard was a tragic side of the story, but there is a positive side. It has a happy ending and I know how we can fix this issue. The good news is that there's a program that can be implemented seamlessly and simply beginning with morning announcements. I next want you to imagine that you are sitting in your kindergarten classroom. It's early in the morning and you are just getting settled in when you hear morning announcements coming on over the intercom. They say, they state the date, the date, the lunch menu and after birthday announcements, the meditation minute begins. You are told over the intercom to close your eyes. Take three deep breaths into your belly and clear your mind. You are told that for the next five minutes, all the plans you have for the busy day ahead and all the memories that you have in your mind from your past are placed on the shelf just for now. And the only thing that you need to think about is how your body feels and you're breathing and that's it. You are coached to breathe deeply and slowly. For a sec, four seconds in and four seconds out. You are told to let your muscles and your shoulder go loose, followed by your arms, your hands, your fingers, your legs and your toes. Then your five minutes ends and you are told to open your eyes, take one more great big deep cleansing breath in, stretch as big as you can, and now you are ready for the day. This is an example of how mindfulness is being taught in a few select districts in a few isolated pockets and specific corners of our country. And in the districts and schools where it has been enacted, it has not only taught students positive coping skills and mindfulness on, that they can practice on a daily basis, but it has also completely eradicated school suspensions in the districts where it has been enacted. It has risen test scores, graduation rates, and actively teaches students stress management that they can use far after they, we see them enter or exit the graduation stage after they finish up high school. This program is simple to use. It's easy to integrate and it has a positive effect in several different ways that makes students, that promote every single student's overall success. If we start giving our students access to this, to these tools, it could very well save their life even after they graduate. The reason this subject and this cause are so important to me is because I know how painful the suffering is. Because when I was eleven years old, that's when my symptoms began. Please consider everything I have said here tonight with the utmost urgency and care. We must move forward with these actions and we can do so quickly and begin our part in eradicating this epidemic that affects one in eleven students. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Tommaso. Um, I know you've been in contact with Dr. Vallee and the administrative team. We'll definitely take your suggestions under advisement. Thank you. Okay, at this point in our meeting, we'll go to fourteen point O, executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation case, uh, number fourteen dash CB dash oh seven one two, uh, LCTA and LAC contract negotiations and a particular personality. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? At this point, we'll move into executive session. So effectively, our, our public meeting is adjourned for this evening without formally adjourned. I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. Uh, our next meeting will be January twenty-eighth, uh, two thousand nineteen, which is a budget work session at the Central Avenue School at six thirty, uh, followed by our next regular session meeting will be February eleventh, two thousand eight, two thousand nineteen, uh, at Hillview Elementary at seven PM. Thank you for coming.